You're on television tonight.
Oh.
Uh-oh.
Where's the on-air thing?
There we go.
So you're gonna have to...
That really does work.
Yeah.
Like, I thought it was a joke.
No.
So when that says on-air, you're really recording it.
Yeah, you are being recorded right now.
Good evening, my name is George Morris. I'm the vice-chair of the planning board, and this is the opening of the February 3rd meeting. And we'll introduce the people around the table, starting first with our associate member.
Pete Pecos.
John O'Connell.
Jim Robinson.
And Martha Taylor-Town Planner.
Very good. The first item on the agenda were in minutes for January 6th and January 20th. Unfortunately, they are not ready yet, so they'll be taken up at another meeting for review, and you are ready, right?
Would you want to do this?
If you can come up to the microphone, actually, you can bring that over a little bit. Leave the microphone over on the side.
I think I should. I'm supposed to get up and go.
Good evening, thank you. My name is Chris Horan. I reside at 11 Lund Street in Byfield, which is, I'm a director-butter to this current property. And I did over the Yellow School, as you guys probably know. So this is sort of in continuation of that, sort of defining and delineating that whole Byfield Village District. It's currently a Methodist church. It went out of business November 2014. And what you have in front of you is a proposal to convert it to four townhouse-style condominiums, each three bedrooms, two and a half bathrooms, roughly 25, 26 hundred square feet, includes three floors, the ground level, which currently is livable space, the first level, and then a proposed second level. There is a part of a second level to it, but we'd put another floor in, inside of that main church cavity area, hence the new roof lines on the second floor. So we have a rendering there, a detailed site plan. We need three approvals for this. Because it's in the water overlay district, we need a special permit from the Board of Selectmen. Because we're converting it to a four-unit building, and we're increasing or renovating or adding more than 1,000 square feet, we need a special permit from the planning board and a site review.
Okay.
And all the documentation is there, and I've already met with the selectmen briefly and gave them everything to submit for the overlay approval. There's floor plans, elevations, a landscape plan as well. Trying to keep neutral colors, maintain a lot of open space, especially in the back. There's a proposed, as far as new structures above and beyond what's actually existing, on the fork, on the front, there was a one-story addition that we're proposing to increase to a two-story addition and stretching it out a little bit more. I think the incremental difference was about 250 or 300 square feet.
Mm-hmm.
And then the two, two-car garages, roughly 24 by 20. I think one's 22 by 24 and one's 24 by 24. So we're not adding a lot, we're using primarily the existing footprint.
Mm-hmm.
And we're introducing a lot more, as you can see on the landscape plan, a lot more trees. All the lighting, Martha, I sent you an email, I don't know if you got this.
I saw that, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I'm getting a plan for that, but it's all gonna be downlighting, there's no floodlights, you know, beaming from the top. That's a fairly busy area, as you know.
It is.
So there's car, I mean, my main concern is not our lighting, but cars, I mean, if you're standing in the building, those cars are coming down from the highway on Central Street, I mean, it's pretty...
But they go fast.
They go fast, too. Hence, the, if you notice, on the Central Street side, we are proposing an eight-foot fence there, it's probably gonna be seven and a half to eight feet, only because it's so busy and so, we're just trying to provide some protection there from the activity, the noise, the lights. On the backside, we toned it down to a five-foot picket fence to try to sort of keep, you know, maintain more the residential feel. And the colors you're seeing there will actually be the colors for the exterior. We're primary clapboard, but on the peaks, on the gables, throughout, consistently, we're doing decorative shingles in a different color, just to add a little more detail.
Since this is the subject of a special permit, we really can't discuss it too much tonight or ask many questions.
Sure.
But we are having a joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen on...
They voted to hold it on March 8th, which is their night, and we had discussed that sort of in advance.
Right.
At 7:15. So the planning board does need to vote to accept the plan and schedule the public hearing. I guess my question, since Elizabeth actually isn't here yet and John has refused himself, whether, because this involves a special permit, whether you can call Pete to the table, so to speak, or wait until Elizabeth gets here and take the vote.
We're gonna wait for Elizabeth.
Okay.
I think we have to. But she should be along shortly.
Okay.
Sit down and relax.
Okay. And I appreciate you accommodating, you know, meeting with the selectmen, that's helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, that is helpful for us still. Makes it very efficient.
Right, so we will, what we'll do is put together a notice that basically references all three hearings on that date and at that time, and we'll get you, that language needs to be published in the paper twice, so the dates of publication will be on there, we'll help coordinate that with you.
If you could just kind of walk me through that, whatever we need to do all day.
Yeah, we can do that, and then the butter notification needs to go out, but this, you know, this at least keeps it to one notification instead of three.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
So, and I have, you know, I've reviewed the submittal for completeness, not for technical review, that will happen. Because it's in the Water Supply Protection Overlay District, there is some storm water, some roof infiltration, there's not a lot going on there, I don't know whether the board feels that there would be any need for, you know, engineering review. It seems pretty straightforward.
And with the storm drainage and all, we're making it better than it actually is.
Right, the, yeah, the post-development is gonna be much improved from the pre-development.
Do you have a recommendation on that?
My own feeling is that it's probably simple enough that I don't think we need, you know, we're not, we're not looking at a lot of grading changes or anything like that. It's basically gonna be, you know, cul-de-sac structure to take the roof infiltration.
John, do you have any comments on the storm water issues, if any?
The storm water issues and the site?
Yes.
I have not looked at the site plan in any detail.
Okay.
As yet. I probably will have some thoughts when I see it. Who's, who's your civil guy?
Steve Sawyer.
Oh, Steve, yeah.
From DCI.
Yeah, they're good.
He will be at the meeting on the 8th, he just confirmed, so, any questions you have for him?
So you have a, you have, he has put together a site plan now, okay.
It's very, it's very detailed.
It's in that package, yeah, I'll be glad to have a look at it.
Okay.
Say what I think. I don't know to what extent I can participate in that, but I'll be glad to say something. And we may want to have, do we want to have Joe have a look at this?
Well, that's the question, whether...
Yeah, we were talking about that. Do you think Joe ought to take a look at it?
I don't know, I haven't seen it.
Yeah.
It's a pretty small, pretty small job, I can't, you know, Steve knows what he's doing for one thing, and secondly, it's a small job and I can't see anything you do.
It's pretty...
If he did nothing at all, there'd be no harm done, so, anything at all is good.
And we'll...
Has he put some, some...
Yeah, as Martha said.
...best management practices into it, yeah.
I think we'll pass on that.
Yeah, I think, given the nature and size of the project, I think that's okay.
I think it's enough not to take a look at it.
Yeah.
We're good, we're good.
I appreciate that. And then traffic, Chloe did a, he did a analysis on that as well, and again, it's mitigating what's currently there.
You don't have to stand there, you can come sit down.
So if we have questions, then should we hold them off to March 8th?
Yes.
Yeah.
We really can't get into a comprehensive discussion here.
Martha and I have been in discussions for, it seemed like, two months now.
Forever.
Yeah, she's been very helpful with the recommendations, so we've fed it along this whole way out, so.
Well, aside, you did a really nice job with the Yellow School.
Thank you very much.
It's, every time I drive by, I said, "That's a nice job."
They had more trees, I don't know if you saw that?
Oh, yeah, I did.
About seventeen of them. Yeah.
I live in Nob Hill, so I go by that every day.
Oh, do you?
A couple times, yeah.
We love living, it's fantastic, it's just so, it's such a great community, it really is. You're close to everything.
Yeah.
It's quiet. When you're inside that house, you don't hear much. It's nice.
Oh, I bet you don't.
The walls are thick.
Yeah. I got a question just out of curiosity.
Sure.
I noticed you have city water, you have sewer?
This new site?
Yeah.
It's gonna be a private subject.
Okay.
We've already done the perk test.
The leaching field is gonna be here.
It'll be gravity, yeah.
And then the reserve.
Fortunately, it all worked out well, and everything dead went out there, we looked at it, so far it looks really good.
Excellent.
So it'll be one system for you, I think it's a 3,000 gallon tank.
Mm-hmm.
Or two tanks, but, yeah.
Right.
So, so far that looks good. We'll have to bring in a bigger water line, I'm sure. I think it's probably an inch line coming in now.
Only an inch?
I think so.
Yeah.
That's what Dan said, so.
So you've talked, you have talked to them about that?
I did, yeah. It would remain in the same location, he says it's easy to do, but I'll have my lower side, size it out, but I imagine we'll have to increase it. And there's gas, which I'd like to bring in, like I did with my house, it's natural gas right on Central Street. I was lucky because it stopped pretty much where the Yellow School ended.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Didn't go much further. Yeah, it stops right around there, right at the Lund Street.
What do you use, Jim, propane?
Long story, we have natural gas.
You have natural gas?
Where are you from?
Nob Hill subdivision.
Oh, sure, you have natural gas there?
There are two houses there that have it.
How do you, it was, it was just on Main Street?
No, it comes in from River Street there.
Oh. Oh, you lucked out?
Yeah.
As I did, yeah. There's a big difference.
We, the way the story goes, yeah, I don't know, we're in the...
No, you're on air.
Anyway.
It happened.
Yeah, there is, there is one line, it went to one house, and we were able to tap into it, make two houses now in the subdivision.
Oh, that's great. Are there any stories to tell?
No, I don't know if we want to, you know, just come back to this when Elizabeth gets here.
Why don't we do that?
Yeah.
Go on to whatever else we have.
Yeah, I mean, the next was Chrissy, and she's not here yet either. So, do you want to move on to the next item?
Subdivision rules and regulations?
Yeah.
Totally.
We gotta have John come up.
Excuse me, John? Could you come up here?
Sorry, I...
Please, I'm sorry.
I'm talking to my client. We'll talk in the morning, yeah. Try me, it's gonna be one of those days.
No, I understand. We'll try to do it easy way first.
It's Russian roulette, yeah, tomorrow.
Nothing urgent, though.
That's good, I like those.
John, with some effort, I read the rules and regulations.
Did you?
Subdivision, with some effort.
Good.
And I will have some comments after I compare it to law.
Okay, good.
But I don't know whether you've had a chance to read them?
Yeah.
Peter?
I've looked, yes.
You've looked, okay.
Does anybody have questions of me at this point?
Not at this point. Do you have anything you want to say about them, any...
Well, I would make the comment that Joe came back with about two pages of issues. Some of them, I think he's right, some I had already found that I'd missed on the first go around. Okay. Like the percentage slope of the road, 2% is more than you want to have, 1% is industry standard. Some of the things, I got the impression that Joe just didn't really understand where we were coming from, and if he didn't understand, we gotta clean it up, because of all people in town, if he did, he should understand it. So I think what I'm gonna want to do over the next two weeks before the next meeting is try to get with Joe, talk with him, and get his thoughts, and see if we can put together some, for those things that are, that are right, but the way they're put, the language is perhaps misleading, get it so it's not misleading. Does that suit everybody?
That's fine.
We get to the point where Joe and I are both happy?
And you get information out to us.
I don't really disagree with anything he said. I think that in some cases, he didn't understand what we were trying to accomplish. A lot had to do with trees, saving trees, six-inch caliper and larger. Nobody planned on counting every six-inch tree. The idea was typically they would stake the, rough-stake the road, and if we saw something really nice, tie a ribbon around it.
Okay, you mentioned six-inch caliber, I did notice one section mentioned trees at six-inch diameter.
Oh, maybe I said diam, maybe I said use the wrong word.
You did.
I can't remember what I...
I think you wanted to use caliber.
I don't remember what they say.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, you know...
Six-inch diameter is pretty small.
In any event, that, saving trees, but large trees is not a bad idea, but turning it into a real problem is a bad idea.
Right.
So, that suit everybody?
Yeah, I had a question for you. What's the significance of the yellow? You know, we got the, we got the red, I understand what that is, now there's a comma. Sometimes highlighted in yellow. What does that mean, that it's...
Martha did it, but which, yellow versus the red?
Yeah, what's yellow versus red?
Um, yellow, I highlighted in yellow some, some things that when, and when we've been going through it, there were still some questions that needed to be resolved, so it's sort of like, you know, please pay particular attention to this.
Yeah, a flag.
Because we need to, to discuss it further. So, that was...
Okay.
And just, I have, I've sent it out to, you know, all the relevant department...
Yeah.
...heads and so on in town, as well as to Ginny Kramer for her review. And I also was talking to Joe Cosgrove at the MVPC meeting today, and we got into a discussion about subdivision regulations.
Yeah.
And so I'm gonna send it to him.
Is he good, oh, good, yeah.
I'm gonna send it to him and Tony for review as well.
Tony as well, that's fine.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, he's the road guy.
Yeah, because we were talking about complete streets and all of that stuff.
Oh, yeah, that was a big thing at today's meeting.
Yeah, yeah. So, and I've requested comments back from everybody on the 16th of February, so...
Okay.
Then we can try to kind of compile them in some rational fashion, so that we can then discuss them, and still aiming to have a public hearing in April at the latest.
Yeah. James has already read it, I had, or he didn't read the whole thing, he read what, read what I had outlined for him that he cared about. I didn't want to make him read all 40 or 50 pages, but the stuff that had to do with him, he's okay. Some of Joe's comments had to do with feedback we've had from the fire department in the past and highway. They may look excessive, but this is what the fire department wants, and I was brought up that those guys get what they want, you know, I'm not gonna argue with a fire truck, you know?
Did you have any questions on, we're talking subdivision rules and regs, you've got questions? Do we want to deal with this now, we're in between hearings, appearances?
Why don't we have Elizabeth sit down, and we'll just let you know what's going on so far, and we'll get along with Chris's application acceptance.
Okay, so we talk about rules and regs later?
We'll pick that up again.
Yeah, okay.
Hi, Elizabeth. Chris Horan was here before you got here, obviously, and he gave his presentation...
Okay.
...concerning the site plan review, not site plan review, yeah.
Yeah, site plan and special permit.
And special permit applications. These are night items that we can discuss deeply tonight, and we didn't, only because it'd be subject to an open hearing, public hearing with the Board of Selectmen on the 8th of March.
At 7:15.
At 7:15, so I'm glad you're here, so we can go ahead and vote on this, unless you have some questions.
We're voting to just accept the application, right?
Yes, that's correct.
And set, and set the public hearing date.
Much as I like to accept that, I don't think...
There was a check, it wasn't...
Thank you.
You're tempting, but...
And I even have it on my calendar already.
Not worth going to jail for.
So, James, would you make a motion?
I move to accept the special permit and site plan review applications for redevelopment of 11 Central Street.
Second.
Second, now there's another motion for the public hearing. How do you want that framed, Martha?
Just move to set the public hearing date for March 8th at 7:15.
As a joint hearing with the Board of Selectmen?
Yeah.
Okay. Elizabeth, you want to do that?
I will do this one. I move to set the hearing date for this matter to March 8th at 7:15 before a joint meeting of the Board of Selectmen and this planning board.
Okay, we'll vote on the first motion, any discussion? Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And now for the second motion, any discussion? All in favor? Excuse me, second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, thanks again for coming here, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
I can hold you up, sorry.
We'll see you on the 8th.
Thank you very much. You all set?
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Chrissy?
Hi. Can I come sit up there?
Sure.
So you need to, well, you'll need to...
Oh, that's right, you have to be near the microphone, but you can bring that over a little bit.
I can give one.
Yeah, we have a spare mic we can use here.
We could do that, too, if you want. Hello, my name is Chrissy Rupp, my husband and I own a apartment at Trail Running Center, and we live on the property of 6769 Newbury Port Turnpike. We went through a site plan review process a couple of years ago, and as a part of that process...
Excuse me, Chrissy, would you mind speaking up, because I'm, like a fence post, I'm getting not one word.
Is this really...
This doesn't notify the room.
Okay, then I'll just use my big voice.
Yeah, just speak up, that doesn't, that doesn't microphone.
That's for TV only.
Gotcha. As far as, as part of the first site plan review, we had gotten approval to do some work on the house that's on the property, and we're, I'm just here tonight to request an extension on the, I don't know what you call it, but the approval for that site plan review. We are beginning the process of putting plans together for the house with the goal that that work would be done on the property by September 2017, so I have a request in that we would extend that approval, extension deadline until December of 2017 to give us a little bit of breathing room on the construction.
Right, and I think, here's the, the letter from Chrissy, shall I read it, or...
Yes, please.
Okay. It says, "Dear members of the planning board, we are here with requesting an extension to the site plan approval granted on November 14th, 2013, for the property located at 6769 Newbury Port Turnpike, Newbury, Mass. We are in the planning process for additional improvements to the house, which were initially anticipated in the original approval. The proposed improvements have a completion goal date of September 1st, 2017, and as such, we request an extension of the approval through December 30th, 2017, to allow for any unexpected construction delays."
And you had discussed this with Ginny, in terms of the...
Right.
...original permit running out?
Right, right. Sam, Sam was in touch with Ginny and responded that the language, you know, allows the flexibility for extending, extending it, the work has been completed, the housework was, you know, part of the original approval.
Yes.
And so that will, you know, that will basically complete what was originally anticipated.
Is the revised, is there a revised plan that goes with this?
There will be, we're doing it in two steps, basically, because the plan isn't quite ready, it's...
Really close.
It's very close, but in, you know, talking about it, it seemed like first, just get the approval extension done, and then Chrissy will be back shortly with the plans for what they anticipate doing.
Okay, so basically, I'm sorry I missed what it's all about. I gather it's the old house to be demolished?
Yes.
And something rebuilt?
Yes.
Same foundation, or larger footprint, or what?
No, smaller footprint.
Smaller footprint, okay.
We're gonna pull it back off the road a little bit.
Okay. Both good things?
Basically, what happened is that we planned to put an addition on the house, but once we were doing the construction on the business property, we had to pull the dirt away from the house foundation, and we just realized the entire thing is ready to collapse.
Yeah.
So it just needs to go, so we went to modify our plan a little bit.
Okay.
So I'll be back very soon with the building plans.
So tonight, you're looking for an indication of our mood?
Just looking for an extension on the approval.
Oh, you're looking for an extension, oh, okay.
Right, and just a little bit more, as Chrissy said, it is within the original footprint that was approved, and we had a joint meeting with Doug and Sam about this as well, and so they'll be submitting a request for determination to the Conservation Commission...
Yeah.
...as part of the process. So, because it, again, it's within the original footprint, and disturbance will be minimal.
Shouldn't be, that shouldn't be a big deal, I wouldn't think.
Anything that's not a big deal is so exciting.
It is a big deal.
Round one almost killed me, so...
I remember.
So, and I do have some language for a motion to extend.
Pretty good.
I just brought yourself in.
Thank you, thank you.
Did you draft it?
No, I did not.
Okay, are we ready?
Yes.
Based on the foregoing, I move that the planning board grant a time extension for the site plan review approval for 6769 Newbury Port Turnpike to Chrissy Rupp until December 30th, 2017.
Oh, okay. Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, the ayes have it, motion passed.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Far simpler than I thought it was. No, I know it.
So, so basically, this will get filed with the, with the town clerk, and...
So in terms of coming back, I met with the architect this morning, she's, she's pretty much ready to pull that together, so what are the, what is the options for us coming back in with the plans?
Um, well, we meet, we're not sure about the next meeting, whether we'll meet for the second, second meeting in February or not.
We're still debating that one.
Yeah, that one's, so, and we do have a public hearing scheduled for March 2nd, unclear whether it will be continued to March 16th or another, another date, but I don't know don't know what would the board's pleasure be on, on that.
We set a time certain for the next meeting at seven thirty for the rego continuation?
I think it was seven thirty.
I set it for seven thirty.
Yeah, I think, I think so, so it could.
There would be time ahead of time.
Yep.
To take care of that.
At the next meeting?
Yes.
Well, not the next, the March second meeting.
March second.
March two.
Yeah, does that?
Well, it doesn't work for me, unfortunately.
Doesn't, okay. The following would be March sixteenth.
Good.
Be back then.
We shall see you then.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. May I suggest, given that somebody waiting, that we take him out of his, get him out of his misery and, and talk subdivision rules after that? Is there something he would like to see the board for?
No, I'm just new to town and...
Oh, good. Oh, you're welcome. Come on up and so you can, come on up front if you like.
I can hear you fine, thank you.
Good. Welcome to town. There's a seat on the planning board opening up real soon, so hey. So we're talking subdivision, I'm going to move around, if that's okay with everybody? Yes, that's fine. I got a fighting chance of hearing you at that point. Okay, questions? Do you realize how that roll around sounded on TV?
I don't fear.
I'll hear about it from my wife. James, do you have a question? Or were you satisfied with that?
I've already answered.
Okay.
You can certainly track me down outside of planning board meetings with any further questions, by all means, but probably be good to hear whatever issues there are. Have you sent, Martha, did you send Joe's letter to everybody?
Um, I didn't, because I didn't know if you and I wanted to talk about it first so that we could, you know, annotate it, or I can just send it out.
Okay.
Whatever you think.
I think, it wouldn't hurt to send it out at this point.
Okay, I'll do that.
I do think we ought to talk about it. You want to talk about it before or after I see Joe?
Before.
Before, okay.
I did have one question, just out of curiosity. The permanent signs identifying the subdivision by name other than street signs are prohibited.
You know, that's a leftover, and I don't understand that either. I'm glad you brought that up. I've never understood why that was a big deal. It might be something that should be subject to somebody's approval before you just put it up at most, but I don't see why it's a problem.
Neither do I.
If you can have it after, do we, do we not want signs at all?
Well, we had them for Fartherland Farm.
Yeah, and somebody drove into it, didn't they? Demolished it?
Uh, one end, yes. The other one is just rotting off. And we also had it for Caldwell Farms.
Right.
Oldie Village did not have it.
And Livingston Lane, I think, has one as well.
Livingston Lane, they do.
Yeah, they do.
So we want to just rub that whole sentence?
I think it ought to be subject to approval of the board.
Yeah.
You think?
Or the building inspector, one or the other. Yeah, because, yeah.
And we may need to modify our sign regulations to accommodate that, but that was why it was flagged there, because, you know, we actually have some, so it was flagged for discussion.
And that is assigned by law, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so we'll have to change the bylaw.
And Martha, I'm sorry, I'm going to ask you to repeat what you were explaining when I came in. What's the significance of highlighted versus the?
Highlighted, some of the yellow highlighted ones are things that were still kind of open-ended, so ones that I particularly wanted to draw attention to.
John, I got a technical question.
Yes.
In one section it mentions, shall be marked with an arrow.
I'm sorry?
It said a plane will be marked with an arrow, is that, and it didn't specify true or magnetic, is it usually true?
Well, if it's anything, it's both.
Okay, does it show declination?
See an arrow like this, you know?
With the declination?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
At the, whatever the, the magnetic variation is at that.
Right, because in another section.
Sixteen degrees, yeah.
Right, in another section it says true. So there was a little...
I don't think there's anything there we care about. As long as you know what it is, that's the important thing.
And, and the other thing that's sometimes done is if there's a, if there's a plan that's been approved with an arrow, whatever, whatever it was, then it will reference that, that arrow on a plan that is recorded.
Okay.
So, you know, that's kind of the, in a sense, a third option.
Okay.
You, if there were, if this is an addition to an existing?
No, if there's, if there's a previous plan, say if you have a surveyor who is doing an A and R plan.
Yeah.
And going off of previous plans that have been approved.
Compiled.
Yeah, yeah, and so if there's an arrow on that, whatever, you know, whether it was true or magnetic, then it references that.
Okay.
Taking it from a previous plan, so.
Yeah. It's one of those things that I think we ought to have something, just for no other reason than, than orientation. No surveyor is going to, it's, it's almost unthinkable that anyone is going to use that arrow in a property survey. They will use virtually everything they can before they get into the arrow. That might be something that would settle a minor difference.
Right.
But it's not going to be a big deal for, you know, you try to put a survey plan together so that twenty years from now, another surveyor can just go in, set up, and wham, do it.
Yeah, having it true, I think, is easy, because the declination changes all the time.
It does, it does change. If you've got a date, you can track back to what the decla, uh, the variation was at that point in time.
Yeah, it's about sixteen now, when we were young.
It's in rule figures, sixteen degrees, yeah.
When we were young, it was twelve.
Three minutes a year, pardon?
When we were young, it was twelve. Maybe thirteen.
When you were young, it was twelve. I, I remember fifteen myself.
Oh, do you really?
Yeah, it, it does, it's like three, three minutes a year, I believe, is the vary, is the way it varies.
Good.
I was told when I was young that the reason you have that is because there was a huge deposit of iron up in northern, northern Canada, which of course, like many things, I was told in grammar school, is absolutely not true.
Not true.
No, it's nothing to do with attracting, being attracted by a big amount of iron, nothing at all.
So anything else on this?
Peter?
Peter, any questions?
James has had a look at it, at, he has it, he looked, I gave him just so he didn't waste his time. I marked up all the pages that I thought he would care about, and he told me today he'd been through those and it didn't have any issues. I want to be sure that Nate is okay with the numbers. The, the rids and the radii of cover sacks and such things are representative of what Billy Pearson wanted, probably now three or four years ago. James is still okay with it, because they, they both share the problem. One's got to get a ladder truck around, the other guy's got to get a large plow, and...
Same problem.
Similar problem, yeah. Plows do damage, fire trucks.
Just get stuck, otherwise.
Get stuck, and that's not what you want to have when there's a fire going.
Right.
You don't like to get fire trucks stuck.
Anything else? Jim?
I ran out of time.
I'm sorry?
I ran out of time. In the last few pages, there's a lot of red, but I didn't, I didn't get to it, so.
Well...
I don't know, we can do this.
Some of that red was the violation of the stormwater rules and regs.
Yeah.
That were in that, and they never got removed when we did our other one. There was a minor problem of, of the, the required methods of calculating runoff and so forth were just way beyond wrong. Wrong didn't start to describe them.
And a lot of the red, in the, kind of at the ladder section or insertions, we, we really did not have a lot covering us during the construction phase, so a lot of that really has to do with, with that phase, and the changes to inspections and...
Now, have we published the forms?
Uh, no, that's not included here.
You're still working on them?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay. The other thing that I, I don't think we published is the, did we publish the cross section?
Uh, yes, that's inserted in there.
Did that go with that?
Yeah, yeah.
Because Joe had some problems with that, and I guess we can work that out, I'm sure. I don't think he understood that, that we were trying to keep the width of the road as narrow as the fire department would let us.
Yeah, I did send him an email saying, saying that the width was, you know, essentially requested by the fire department.
Yeah.
And we're also trying to work in country drainage instead of...
And you, you just ran out of space. Either, either widen the right-of-way or don't have any trees, or TV, or cable, or, you know, all the other things that you have to make space for.
Yeah, that was another thing that I saw in there. It talked about municipal easements for services.
Yeah.
And that does not include cable, yes? That would have to be mentioned also, and for private...
Cable, that was within the right-of-way. I don't think we were looking for, but this is a good point. I think you could probably educate me on this. I'm assuming that if it's in the right-of-way, no easements are required, because the town already owns it. The easements that we were talking about were when you, when you have a drainage way, a couple of ditches going this way, and they got to go that way to get to the stream and stake a ditch. Now, that ditch needs to be maintained, and it really is a nuisance if one of the butters that shared that ditch, if it runs around the property line, if one of them says, you can't come on my property. Because I'm given to want to say, I always thought that there was such a thing as a, an easement of necessity, so that if the town had a ditch running through my property, I couldn't keep them from maintaining it.
That's correct.
But a recent, not our present, but an earlier town council said, no, no, no. You want to go on somebody's property, they don't want you to go on. The only way you can do it is with a court order, and that, of course, gets expensive.
Yeah, it does, so it'd be better to put it in ahead of time.
The easement?
Yes.
Of course, that's, that's why we...
Would you check with Ginny on that, Martha?
Uh, sure.
Just to take a peek at it?
What's that?
I'm going to ask, I just asked Martha to check with Ginny, our town council, to see if that would be important to do. My concern was cable television of any type, for example, FiOS or...
Oh, yeah, all those buried things.
Tomcats, yeah, anything buried before the town owns the road, certainly. The developer has a private road, and he has to have easements in there.
Right, right, and that, and that has been done.
In there?
No, I don't know that it's mentioned here, but it should, it should be if it's not.
It doesn't, it just mentions municipal services.
Okay. Am I right that if it's a town-owned road, not an issue? If it's a privately-owned road, it certainly is an issue, because, let's say, Newbury Port Water needs to get at, at Rolfe Lane subdivision, they will be expected to work on their mains in there, right?
Yes. But I would guess, I would guess I would ask if the town has any objection to a utility company putting in, a private utility putting in cable lines, for example?
Right.
Well, we, we do require a duck bank.
Okay.
For, and, and anything that go in that, power, cable, fire alarm, whatever. We do require that, that power be underground, that all utilities be underground. But you raise a point relative to, let's say, gas.
Right.
Okay. On private property, there should be something that...
A dedicated easement.
A dedicated, should there not, would that not be? Because we don't distinguish between town-owned roads and association-owned roads, and maybe we should.
Now, let's give that some consideration, I think.
Yeah, let's, maybe we ought to think about that.
Right.
Especially you two, that know what you're talking about on this subject.
Assumptions are being made. Assumptions are being made.
Well, I know, but I'm trying people like Joyce.
Thank you, John. Is there anything else on this? All done, John?
I'm, I'm all done. This, this is your, your session too, Chris, me, and any comments that you have, especially negative comments, I would really appreciate over the next couple of weeks. And, you know, Martha's got my phone number, or you do, I know.
I do, sure.
But by all means, get in touch with me and voice your concerns, because, you know, we don't want to do this again.
No, it would be nice to get it together. You've done a lot of work on this.
Pardon me?
You've done a lot of work on this over five years and...
Well, I did a lot of work over, over about three months, and the rest of it...
It was open five years, and Martha, thank you too for what you put into it.
Yeah.
It's been a lot. Okay, then, any, no other new business, liaison reports?
Oh, wait, no, we do, new business, the Four Rolfe Lane.
Oh, that's right, yes.
Sorry.
Can I stay here, because I can hear you?
Yes.
I can't even hear you, I'm sitting over there.
This was just on Lot Four, or Number Four?
Well, it's Four Rolfe.
Four Rolfe Lane.
Proposed lot line changes with forty-one and forty-three High Road as well.
The plan is a little confusing as it stands right now, but the owner of Four Rolfe Lane has a parcel which basically is bounded by these two lines with Z's in them. And he is looking to expand his parcel. Mr. Faria, who, who owns parcels at, what is it, forty-one, forty-three, is, they're going to, you know, do, do a lot line change between the two. He's bringing his up to conforming in all respects, except for the frontage. It's bounded, he's bounded by these two parcels on, on either side, so he's about seven feet short, I think, if you required one hundred and twenty-five feet of frontage. He's going before the ZBA on the eighteenth for frontage variance.
Okay.
And, so, I, I thought I would bring this up with the board tonight to, you know, get some, some input to see whether the board, Ginny had advised that this can't come before the board for endorsement without the frontage variance, because endorsements A and Rs are based on frontage, and it's too short. But I think, my, my personal opinion is that it's in, in the spirit of the, you know, the A and R, the subdivision control law. Part of the reason for this is he's got a septic system easement right now on Mr. Faria's property, and so this will allow him to keep that or to do a repair, replacement of septic system, all on his property instead of Mr. Faria's property, and he wouldn't be able to do that otherwise. So, and I've had discussions with Mr., the owner, Mr. Signore, as well as Mark Griffin, who, the attorney who's representing him. So this is really just kind of for, you know, when...
It's informational, really.
Informational.
So we don't take a vote in support of this or against it?
You know, there's no vote if there's any, you know, sort of straw, you know, straw vote or any opinion that I can pass on to the ZBA in addition to my own, I guess.
Okay. I don't see a problem where the, to me, it's close enough for government work. For years, we had a hundred feet of frontage and nothing calamitous happened. Hundred and twenty-five is better for a host of reasons, but what is it now, a hundred and eighteen?
Yeah, it's twenty, it's twenty-six plus ninety-two, so.
Now, what is he adding on up here?
So he's basically, he's adding on...
Just this piece here?
This kind of L-shaped piece, plus, right now, there, there is access to the property over here from Rolfe Lane, so Mr. Faria would be giving that up, and that would be...
Okay.
You know, that would be given over to this parcel, and there actually is access off of this for this parcel as well.
Okay, I have no further questions. Elizabeth?
I might.
Peter?
So the frontage is being increased or decreased?
Well, it's being increased, what he has now.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so, so the parcel is being made much more conforming.
Yeah, okay. But it's still short of the one twenty-five?
It's still short by about seven, about seven feet.
And so in theory, what would the objection be?
That's up to the ZBA, right. I wouldn't see it.
The only question I have is more just to ground me. Which is the property that was before us recently?
That was eight, okay.
Was this the spec house?
No.
No, no, no.
No.
This is, this is, this is a yellow?
I think it's, yeah, I think it's a little, the kind of the mansard roof.
Is that the one we went in?
No, no, we went in way down here, way down here. This is an existing, this is an existing house, existing garage, and this garage actually originally belonged to that house, but, you know, through lot line changes over the years, it was kind of taken away, and now it's being joined back to it. So, you know, it's making a non-conforming situation.
Much more conforming, right. It's really a minor non-conformance, but the ZBA still has to finish it off.
Right, right.
Then we see it.
Right, right. If it weren't frontage, then the board could, you know, could potentially endorse it, but because it is frontage, it has to go through that process.
Good, okay.
And so that's the case, even if it's non-conforming, it's a rhetorical question because of the situation we're in. But it strikes me as interesting that you're increasing it and it still has to go before.
Right, and, and the issue, the issue is, you know, right now, he's got a grand, his grandfather, who's a legal pre-existing non-conforming, but as soon as he oozes, you know, changes those lot lines, if he doesn't...
Right.
He loses any grandfathering, so.
Got it.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So if you're comfortable, just sort of pass on...
Pass that on, yep. Now to liaison reports. As soon as Martha finishes her note. Board of Selectmen?
Um.
Where do I begin?
Yeah. And really, the only, um, the only thing really impacting the board was the vote that they took regarding Chris's project and accepting that and setting the public hearing date. And I don't, you know, I don't think there was anything else really to report on.
MVPC, nothing, because John is not here?
Right, I mean, I can, I can report on a few things. We did have the planning, planners lunch today, and, um, you know, various updates on things that they're doing. They're planning to have a pictometry flyover now in 2017. There weren't enough communities signing on for 2016, so they'll do it in 2017 for sure. They are going to roll out a revised version of MIMAP, and they're gonna give it to us kind of in a beta version first, and I'm not sure, I'm gonna check with Gerard to see whether he wants, you know, how wide he wants that beta to be, whether I give the link to all of you and you can try it out if you want to, or if, if he wants it to be a little bit more controlled. Betsy Goodrich, who is one of their transportation people, and I went to a training on Monday regarding complete streets. It was required if we want to try to get any funding on, under the complete streets program. So, this may be something that, that could possibly be used for some of the improvements that we've been talking about forever, like Byfield Village. I'm gonna talk to Tracy and James and see, we can potentially get up to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
What's complete streets?
Complete streets, basically, complete streets are streets that are sort of multimodal in a sense, that are friendly to pedestrians and bicycles and cars, and, you know, they've got appropriate sidewalks and crosswalks and, you know, bike lanes where appropriate, but they've come to recognize that not one size fits all, so, you know, they're recognizing that rural communities have different needs from urban communities, and they're not trying to force everybody to increase their width, you know, right-of-way to get bike lanes in and stuff like that, but, but it talks a lot about intersection improvements, similar to what we had designed for, for Byfield, and, you know, things like that, so. And.
That was being talked about this morning, too, with the coalition.
Right.
Tony spoke for a while.
Right. And they also did hand out a flyer. They do their own sort of citizen planner training program. There's a certification that new planning board or conservation commission members may be interested in doing, and I will scan that flyer and send it out to everybody. It's a hundred dollars, and it, it's really kind of some, some basics, like what the different roles are of the different boards in town, and some, some other things, but a former member, Linda McCamick, went through it a few years ago, and I think found it quite useful, so I'll send that information out.
Good. John, Conservation Commission?
Nothing much, really. We meet a couple of weeks from now. Next meeting, there'll probably be something to say, but I can't remember anything of earth-shaking importance.
Okay. That's it?
That's it for me. On that subject, though, you guys need to be thinking about who wants to replace me on the CONCOM as the, as the planning board representative.
Right.
It's my intent, if there's no room, I'm gonna resign the Conservation Commission. We always have more, usually have fewer people in this than is constituted.
Right.
I'd just as soon stay on, but not at the expense of being any kind of an issue. If we, if we need to, to jam a, a planning board member in there, I will leave.
Okay.
So.
Further discussion?
Yeah, because there does have to be a planning board member as a voting member of the CONCOM.
Yeah, that's a requirement. It has to be one of you four.
Right.
On the, on the CONCOM.
I know you're very valuable to the board.
Oh, yeah, really. Oh, yeah, sure.
That's what they tell me all the time.
No, I'm not valuable at all.
Yes, you are.
I might have some slight value if we didn't have Doug, but Doug is, we are very, very fortunate to have Doug.
Yeah, we are.
Leading that charge, he's terrific.
Okay, and the zoning board.
It was a great meeting, too.
Zoning Board of Appeals, there's an ongoing matter on Twenty-Seven Northern Boulevard, and I understand there are three new assess, accessory apartment applications.
Um, well, I know there's one on Fatherland Drive.
Right. What were the other two items?
I don't, I don't, I don't remember what the other two items are.
I don't remember what the other was, too. I thought there was one other additional accessory apartment.
Yeah, I, I honestly don't remember, but they're gonna have a full agenda on the Eighteenth.
Right, more to follow then. Anything else from anybody else?
Actually, on, on the ZBA, I did contact Susan to see if we can find a time for a joint meeting.
Yes.
And I did say to her, and I've discussed it with Sam, that, you know, the likelihood of having anything for this town meeting is very small at this point, especially because town meeting is a month earlier. There were some housekeeping items that Sam had, but, you know, nothing that he feels can't wait until the fall.
Okay.
And, but we'll, you know, we'll see what, what the ZBA has on their mind. But I didn't hear back, so I, I, I don't have any dates to propose to anybody at this point.
Thank you.
Do we want to talk about the issue we were talking about tomorrow, or in your judgment, should we not? I guess maybe, I mean, not this morning.
This morning.
Your call.
Yeah, no, well, just, I think we had mentioned to the, to the board a while, while back, that there was some concern on, on the part of Bill DiFrancesco at Sled Road about inspections. There's a little bit of disconnect between what his expectations were. He thought that the inspections were gonna be limited to just the constructed wetland, and the board had left it more open-ended than that, and the last time the board discussed it, I think the consensus was to kind of leave it up to, to John and me as to what you all felt was, or, you know, what we felt was appropriate.
Which is basically what we did.
Right.
And now there's another chapter initiated.
Right. So, so, you know, we had, we had talked with each other and also with our engineer, Joe Suwodka, about at least inspecting the, you know, the grading when it's, when it comes time to, to paving, but I think there is still, you know, kind of continuing disconnect about that, and I don't know, I'll turn it over to you.
You know, I think it should be emphasized that it's one of those unfortunate situations where you have two parties, each of extremely goodwill.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that, for whatever reason, are not getting it, okay? And I think, I had emphasized to Bill that the other day, when Martha and I were out there, that, you know, ran through all of the reasons, and that he's really not in a position to be telling the planning board how to be a planning board.
Right.
You know, it's, it is definitely our call. His point is that they're doing a great job, which they appear to be already. I'm kind of tied into that professionally through associations. His father-in-law's company, and now his son, his brother-in-law's, one of his brother-in-law's companies, have been a client of mine for about thirty years. I know those people. I know that his soils engineer, he's the only guy I've ever seen in that particular position that went and hired a soils engineer, and, I mean, I wouldn't have done that, you know? So, I, I credit him for being serious about what he's doing, and he did, I thought, quite a nice job with the, what Joe was originally tasked with inspecting. I can understand why he feels, hey, I'm doing this, I'm doing everything right, why should I have to pay? That's very understandable. The flip side is that when they were before us, you probably still probably remember, but you would.
Yes.
I raised the issue of, two issues, both of which saved a significant amount of money. I reminded them that they didn't need to have four-foot sumps, which, given the fact they're in ledge, that made a difference to their lives. That probably saved them more money than Joe could possibly cost, and I said, you know, I, since we're headed towards, on the subdivision rules and regs, going from four-inch required pavement to three.
Right.
What the heck, you know, go ahead and use the three, the board bought it, and that saved them, I think, somewhere close to fifteen grand, and that Joe's bill is in the two or three grand range, so, you know, come on.
I think this is something that probably calls for continuing dialogue.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think periodically, Joe, and Bill, and you, and Martha.
Yeah, I, I think it's important that the planning board be aware of this.
Right.
I'm getting a little uncomfortable. I mean, appreciate you giving us the, the green light to do what we see fit, but the guy is, he's a citizen, he's a voter, he's a property owner now, and he's gonna be a major property owner when he finishes the stuff.
Right.
And I think, we, we owe him the courtesy of treating it seriously and not just, you know, us little guys dealing with it. Sorry, Martha, the whole board.
Yeah, I was gonna say, would it make some sense to have, invite him to come in to make a little present? Should it make, have him come in and make a nice presentation to us, or raise questions for the board?
I mean, we could do that. He could also, I mean, he, he's made a lot of progress when John and I were out there. The foundations are in for, for the first two buildings. Uh, he's, you know, moving along quite nicely.
Have a site view, for example, go out and talk with him?
So, could do that, because I think John and I are the only ones who have actually been on, on site.
I think so, yeah. He, he would really like to have everybody out. He is legitimately quite proud of what he's done out there.
Oh, it looks wonderful.
And the other thing is, that was, there were several nasty shocks to him, way more ledge than he thought.
Ledge.
And he found so much, I had forgotten about, Martha reminded me, he, he found a lot of buried stuff. I mean, it was a junkyard on the surface. When you stuck a backhoe in it, it go worst, so. It was, he's, he's had more than his share of bad luck out there.
Yeah, let's do a site visit. I'd like to, I'd like to do a site visit, that'd be.
Site visit, yeah.
Yeah, because I know. Before the snow flies. Yeah. Friday.
This is the first day of, yesterday was the first day of spring in Ireland.
Yes.
Peace of St. Bridget.
Really?
David Bridget. Peace of St. Bridget is when spring starts. It's the spring festival.
Wow, early in Ireland.
Thank goodness for the Gulf Stream, you know?
Yes. Goes right in there, doesn't it?
It does, slams right up against County Court.
Yep.
So, well, I could contact Bill to see what we can set up.
Yeah.
And would be nice to review what he's done, and, and we'll take care of any questions he might have while we're there. You can post it as a meeting if you want.
Yeah, probably it would be good to do that. I guess the question is, is when?
Or just set up a date before the snow flies.
Yeah.
I would think the sooner the better.
Probably.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to let this, this has been going on long enough at this point. These things don't get better with age. The other thing is, I had, without knowing particularly what I was talking about, just voiced the opinion that if, in the future, somebody buys this and he finds, finds some nasty surprises, that could have been caught if the planning board were really paying attention, and we had the right to inspect. We did not take the trouble to see if he, if any developer was doing what he said he was going to on his plan, that the town could have some liability, and I, I know the town could definitely have some embarrassment, whether we have liability or not. Do you have any thoughts on that you want to share?
Not at this point.
Okay, I suggested to Martha that she grab Ginny sometime on the fly and.
Go ahead.
See what Ginny's, if that makes sense?
Yes. Much better with Ginny.
Get Ginny's opinion. No, I can appreciate why you didn't want to play town council.
Can't do it.
That's why, that's why we pay the other big bucks.
And the other thing that this has pointed up, which we should make sure we, we include in the site plan review regulations, which I'd like to actually bring back to the board and have a public hearing on the same night we do the subdivision rules and regulations, is we should require a pre-construction conference.
Yeah.
So that everybody is on the same page going forward.
Right.
You know, we didn't have that this time, and I think that, you know.
We did that, we did that as a matter of course, and we made the point to the developer that if the contractor was doing the right thing and we got to trust him, his bill from us would be substantially lower. If we didn't dare turn our back on him, then we would be spending more time and he would be paying us more money, and developers tend to understand, anybody understands that language. And so, Dolph beats up on his contractor to, you know.
So, pre-construction is very valuable.
Yeah, yeah.
It is important, it really is.
You know, we've got a bit of a learning curve here. We haven't had inspections on site plan review before, but I think that, you know, given the complexities of stormwater in particular, I think that it's, it's, it really is something that would, except for very simple projects, we should, we should probably be considering.
Okay.
Yeah. We, we never did, until about, might be, five years or so back, Amesbury and Ipswich started to ask us to enforce site, site, site plan review drawings, which we never did before. For years, we, we just did subdivisions, and every town we worked with, six or seven of them through the years, said, hey, site plan review is your business, not ours, and then, I don't know what triggered it, but Amesbury and Ipswich, both of which are, you know, fairly organized.
Right.
They're bigger communities than we are by far. They started, were asking us to do site plan things as well. So, clearly, it's not a brand-new thing. We was, we started doing this about five, five, oh, probably more than five or six years ago. I was a one-man band when I joined the planning board, wasn't I? Yeah, so, it was set up a year or two.
You were, right.
But we.
You were.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We had a real company once, when I was younger, good looking.
Martha, let me ask you, can we have a workshop without having a meeting per se to discuss some of the things like this, or do we have to leave it as a meeting?
Has to be, I think if there's a quorum of the board, it really has to be a meeting.
There we go.
Well, that's the answer.
Pardon me?
That was the answer, and I thought that was gonna be the answer, but.
You thought that?
Workshops would be nice, but I thought Martha's answer was gonna be that answer.
Can you imagine a private company being managed by a bunch of people that had to tell everybody in the world what was going on?
I don't even want to go there. No, private companies don't have to, obviously, and they don't want to.
Well, why would they?
Generally.
No way to run a railroad.
Anything else to bring before the board, Martha?
I've got just, just kind of an FYI. We have received another notice of intent to sell a property that's currently in Sixty-One A, and this one is Three Twenty-Three R High Road, so it's right sort of at the, the southern end of Newbury Neck, on the east side of High Road. It's actually property owned by Joe Story, and.
Right at the point?
It's, it's, yeah, kind of right at the point. It's right.
And it has the old store in it?
No, there's no, no, it's on the, it's on the, it's on the other side. I don't know if you remember.
Oh, it's on the?
It's on the east side.
On the east side, yeah, there's a store there right at the corner, or it used to be a store. It looked, kind of looks like a, a store turned into a house.
Yeah, and this one actually doesn't have any frontage on High Road.
Oh, okay. No, it's, it's.
It's, it's, it's really.
It's his mother's place, I think, or it's not his mother's, but his aunt's place.
But.
What's he, where is that?
Uh, it's Three Twenty-Three R High Road. So, the selectman will be setting a public hearing date as soon as that's done. I think next, it'll be on their agenda for next Tuesday to set the public hearing date, and as soon as that happens, then they'll be asking all the, you know, boards and commissions for their, for their input on the parcel.
And is it a sale, or is, does the current owner want to take it out of system?
No, it's a sale.
Yeah.
So.
How large a piece is that?
It is, um, it's thirteen point three eight acres, more or less, shown as Lot Eighteen on assessor's map R O Five, and there is a PNS here. And the purchase price is seventy-five thousand dollars.
For thirteen acres?
Right, but it's, it's, yeah, and it's, I think it's written.
Is there any wetland involved?
It's all wetland.
All wetland, okay.
According to, according to the, the assessor's maps, anyway.
That explains the price.
Yeah.
So, I don't, I, I don't have any information on what the, you know, what, what the intention may be. So.
Do they have to say, though, as part of the Sixty-One A process? It may be there.
Yeah, it may. I, I actually haven't gone through this yet, and this is really just FYI that it's gonna be coming.
Okay, good.
The, I think the board, selectmen have until May twentieth, I think, to either exercise their right of first refusal, or assign it, or waive it.
Okay.
And then Martha, I don't know if this is something that can be discussed now, but what happened to the other parcel that you had mentioned at one point, that Ginny didn't think the notice was sufficient, but there was some dispute by the property owner?
Right, and the P and S is basically expired, so, you know, as far as the town is concerned, there is still no, no proper notice, so no action can be taken.
Okay. Anything else?
And I do have an announcement. After years of loyal being behind the door, Steve is, has decided that he would like to move on to other things. And so Caleb asked me to announce that we will be looking for somebody to film the planning board meetings on the first and third Wednesday of every month. So if anybody's...
John, there you go.
What's this?
You can still say associated with the board, you can volunteer to be the person that takes care of video for the planning board meetings.
Martha, as usual, I did, who's leaving, what's going on?
Steve, Steve is leaving, he's not, yeah, he's not gonna be filming us anymore.
Yeah, I think, no, thank you.
So...
I don't do well with things electronic. Me and electrons do not mix well at all.
So, anyway, if anybody out there is interested, please contact Caleb Noble on the media committee or contact the media committee and...
Good.
That's it.
Steve is gonna retire.
Steve is retiring.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Steve. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
Oh, we didn't, we didn't talk about February seventeenth, whether the board wants to meet or not.
I for one, since it's, my kids are in from California.